This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, this is Mayor Mark Calvin calling the meeting to order at 5:00 PM. And this is an emergency city council meeting to handle some HR issues as recommended by the city administrator. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Mesky.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Plowman. Plowman.
Plowman here.
Nelson.
Here.
Eight present.
Check again, just in case.
Did councilmember Fagerly join? Nope, we still, we don't have him. So there's eight present, one absent.
Can somebody text him and see if he's having trouble getting in, please?
I thought he had asked about coming down to City Hall.
Okay, this morning, we had a meeting that was extended out to 11 o'clock and then we had a couple of councilmembers who were not able to be in attendance. So I want to thank everybody for reconvening this evening at 5:00 PM. We have some important business that we need to take care of and we need to follow the recommendation of the governor of the state of Minnesota, Governor Walz, and that talks specifically around essential employees. Brian and I talked this afternoon at about 3:00 o'clock and I'm going to have Brian make some opening comments and then we will continue with the discussion points. The councilmembers that we had heard from prior to having our technical difficulties were councilmember Fagerly and councilmember Mesky. And so I will start with councilmember Mesky to see if he has any follow up comments, followed by councilmember Schwantes, and then we'll follow my way around the dais that we normally have. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to city administrator Grammets.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. As stated, this will be just a brief recap. As you're well aware, emergency executive order 2020 was issued by Governor Walz yesterday. And one of the items that would help the staff determine who should stay and work in place or go home and stay there was the section 6I, triple I, which talks about workers performing all governmental functions, should be determined by the political subdivision determining the minimum personnel necessary to maintain government operations. As everyone is aware, there was an additional document attached to the governor's executive order, which was the CISA guidance for essential critical infrastructure. And that listed the different healthcare, law enforcement, food, agriculture categories that were considered essential. That's an interesting echo.
If you look at the speakers on each box, it tells you where that noise is coming from. So caller number 10, could please mute their mic? That would solve our issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
If I could, if you look at the speakers on each box, it tells you where that noise is coming from. So caller number 10, could please mute their mic? That would solve our issue. Thank you.
Sam is still on.
Caller number 12.
Caller number 10 is Brian there at City Hall. If you're logged in on your tablet, make sure your tablet is muted since you called into the call. Does that make sense?
My tablets, or my laptop's not even here anymore. It's up in IT.
Perfect.
So Sean, would you go up to IT and tell them to turn it off? All right, it seems to be quiet.
Mark speaking again. If we can just have everybody go to mute on their screen unless you are speaking or wish to speak. Those on your call, if you're on your phone, if you could go to mute on your phone as well. Thank you.
All right, picking up where I left off. There are certain positions that are going to be anticipated to be continuing working, which are essential positions with the city. They're listed in the CISA material that was attached to the governor's proclamation or executive order. I felt that it was important for the city council to make the determination of the level of services by which we will continue to operate for the following two weeks. We have internally created a system where obviously fire department, police department, wastewater, and potentially public works would continue in some level of service to continue providing service either to city departments or to the public. But other departments such as planning and zoning, recreation, finance, and some of the engineering functions could either be done from a remote location to perform their duties or would just be sheltering in place as some people have stated that they would go home and not be able to perform any activities. I think we all understand that a police officer cannot go to, go home and still perform their duties. There are other departments that can go home and perform duties such as finance, et cetera. So having said that, I felt it was important for the city council to make the determination of service levels during this timeframe. And it's based on the agenda. That's the first item I had, was item number three, was to say, at what level do we want to have the other departments participate in working onsite at their normal work? And I've had some communications with some of the city councilors who felt a strong position that they would like to see public works, you know, 100% show up to work. And then there's others that might have said, well, there are many things that are not essential and could be delayed. And so the question like in wastewater, I know I'm kind of bouncing here, but the question wastewater was posed to the wastewater superintendent. And he said, well, we can run skeleton crew one week on, one week off to help reduce the number of people that are coming into work and they can get by just as fine as, you know, when people are on vacation or going to school, different things where you have people out of, out of your work chain. So wastewater plans to operate, which is the primary purpose, but they don't necessarily need all of the staff to keep it operating. They can make it with a minimum skeleton crew. So having said that, that to me is, is the whole purpose of this call is to decide, aside from the emergency services, what level of services do we want people to come in? And which do we want them to go, go home and/or work from remote locations? We had gone through two comments from city council members. And I think the next step would be to proceed through that list to see what other councilmembers had to say. And I'll turn that back over to the mayor.
Councilmember Mesky, I'm not sure if you were concluded in your comments. I believe you were and I believe everybody heard your comments. If you have anything to add, otherwise I will turn it to councilmember Schwantes. And then if each councilmember, when you've concluded your comments, pass it to the next person. Councilmember Davis, please pass it to councilmember Alvarado. So councilmember Mesky, if you have comments, go ahead.
Sure. Again, I'll reiterate, I mean, it's a fluid situation. We have to be able to respond quickly if those service levels are problematic. So I have no problem with where they're initially sitting as long as we have an ability to respond if we need to, if they're not, if they're not set the proper, proper levels. Because the safety of our employees is paramount. So if additional things are needed, we just have to make sure we account for the safety of our employees.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that for those of us who are still on the call, I had made some comments. I just wanted to make note of that. I don't know that the mayor or the administrator were online when those comments were made. But I feel very strongly that we need to honor the intent of the stay home order that was put in place by our governor. The directions that he gave were pretty explicit, I thought, in regard to what was acceptable and what was not under each of the more general headings that were listed and ran through a couple of, or a good chunk of those. So it would be my preference that it would be truly essential employees only that would be employed during this two week stay home. I believe that we need to model what we're asking our local businesses to model. And for us to not practice that would, would be very disappointing. So, and with that, councilmember Davis.
Yeah, I agree that we need to follow the governor's and only have the people working that absolutely need to be. Only for critical matters, you know, let's say we get snow or there's just a problem where they need to go to work. Otherwise, I think they should stay home. Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, councilmember Davis. You know, I agree that we, we have to protect our employees. That's very important. I like the idea that, let's say, our accounting people can possibly work from home. I know as a businessperson, I'm working from home. Our office is pretty much abandoned except for one person there currently. So, and that's a call to try to protect us as a, as a business. So I think we have to do the same thing, but I hope we have people available on a need basis of, let's say, there's a big pothole or if there's a tree branch comes down that we can have a rapid response to address those issues safely with proper equipment or gear that they have, that we have, that we can provide them so they can, they can do their jobs safely. But I agree that we have to protect our employees and we have to follow the governor's stance. Councilmember Osmus.
Okay, I have, can you hear me? I have two things. One of my first thing was in reference to the wastewater treatment plant. And I guess I'm not aware of, of what the cross-training is or how deep it goes or who's, if there are certain people that are only capable of doing the very, you know, important tasks. And so I'm just wondering if one or two of those people got sick, what is the, what's the backup plan? And, and have we discussed or talked about bringing in retired people or other people that had been trained at, at those jobs? And I don't, you know, I don't know if there is a position that only one or two people are capable of doing. So that's my first question. And then the second thing would be is if we shut down city offices, I'm just thinking of clear, clear instructions and phone numbers for the public to be able to contact somebody if they have an issue. So they're, try to, that frustration. Okay, so wastewater treatment plant, can anybody answer that one?
I think maybe what we do is just keep going through the, through the councilmembers that have any comments and then we'll come back and answer your questions.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Works for me. Andrew, Plowman is next.
Thank you. Yes, I guess that I will concur with councilmember Osmus. That, that's a very good question. I do believe that I heard earlier there are redundancies built into the system. So public works superintendent, director, whomever, they're aware of those redundancies. And so I feel comfortable handing that authority over to them. My main concern is that our truly essential and critical local services are covered. Beyond that, I believe we should follow suit with the governor and the expectations put on the rest of the business community. They're all feeling the pinch right now. And we are also expected to not only keep ourselves safe and keep our people within our own building and facility safe, but everybody in the community is impacted by what everybody else does as well. So I think it's quite important to adhere to those directives. And if certain services are not deemed critical or essential, I believe that they should stay home, just as everybody else is being advised to do. And I believe that is the safest procedure and it is also the best reflection of the guidance that's been given to us from above. Thanks. I'll hand it off to Audrey, or councilwoman Nelson, sorry.
You have to, Audrey, do you have to unmute your microphone?
Thank you, I'm sorry. Thank you. What I stated is that I did reach out to Brian today to ask the questions that I had made a list of. And so I did get some answers back from him, but I would like us to review these things. And first of all, I have a real concern about our ability from technology standpoint, about our capability of having people work at home. And so I think it would be helpful to review by department who's able to do that. I do see finance as being essential, just like the banking and the financial workers. I think we have an awful lot on our plate when it comes to what we're looking at. Are we going to be able to do streets? Where's our bonding? What are we doing with old clubs and sales tax projects? And I think it's critical for finance to keep working, but also they have been behind and they're trying to catch up. And so my concern is that we empower them, whether it's working from home, I respect that, but a way for them to get done. But I do see them as essential. The other concerns I had raised was, I'm going to put on, I'm the liaison to HRA. HRA has put a plan in place to do cleaning and to do, maintain all of the apartment buildings. And there's some real issues there with, with that. They work directly with development with, I know that they can't do evictions, but they are also working very closely with inspections and some real issues that come up in, in our large apartment buildings. And so my concern is that we do have staff available. If there are city issues that come up, that they can be addressed with, with that particular model in place. Also, when we come to public works, I am concerned as I've been driving around a little bit to keep my sanity. There are a lot of people out and about. And when we put 20,000 people at home, they are going to be out, they're going to be in the parks. And I think our public work staff could be the second set of eyes, just like when we talk about snow removal with how is the police department and community service going to do this? And so I am hopeful that I understand, maybe we can scale back, maybe that's an option. But I do think our public work staff are critical to maintaining a presence and also some opportunities when it comes to making sure we don't have garbage and variety of things or trees, et cetera. So how that is addressed, I understand that. How we're going to pay people is another question. I have real concerns about the rec department and being equitable with other departments. You know, how they're going to be utilized. I was surprised that we did a hire at this point in time and I think we put the other hire on hold right now. But I also would like to hear the initial from the, from the governor was some sort of options regarding layoffs. And while I know we got the, the information from our labor attorney regarding unions, et cetera, I guess that to me fits in with the second item that was on the agenda and I don't know where we're going with that. So those are my questions regarding, but I really would like to hear how our technology can handle this.
Okay, that concludes all the comments from the councilmembers. Councilmember Fagerly, I believe you're at City Hall now from the conversations I'm hearing in the back. If that's so, do you have any comments you'd like to add?
No, that's fine. I heard everything, but no one could hear me.
We can hear you now. Great, great. Thanks for being there. Appreciate that. Okay, our labor attorney, Mr. Scott, do you have any comments you'd like to make? I'm sorry, not our labor attorney, our city attorney. I apologize.
That's okay. Mayor, members of the council, I don't think I have anything to add. Obviously, I think this is a policy question for the council and I think you're really zeroed in on the correct question. There are certain employees in the city that obviously are, fall under the category of critical employees under the governor's order. And on top of that, there's kind of a catchall for anyone else that the city council determines is necessary to deliver priority services. And this conversation I think is really, should be geared toward what is that priority services beyond the basics? Wastewater, public works, those employees that are already covered. So that's, I think, the question. I think you're zeroed in on it. And it's really a policy question on what priority services beyond those you want to maintain. And then obviously what staff is necessary to maintain those services.
Thank you. City administrator Grammets, if you could just go ahead then and start with the wastewater question that we had from Julie and then follow up on the criticality of finance, the inspections department for assisting HRA, and then what we're doing with, with rec department, those were the four questions that I had that were raised. Councilmember Plowman, maybe just to follow up, I'll go to you after the administrator speaks. But I think what I heard you say was is that you were okay with the continuity of services. And then were you willing to hand that off to, at the department head level? So we'll start with administrator Grammets and then we'll go to councilmember Plowman.
All right, thank you. This is Brian Beck. The wastewater staffing issue, I think really just boils down to what does it take to maintain operation? And I, I and Sean Christensen, the public works director, both received an email from the wastewater superintendent and basically says, we can split our crews into two and we can handle the wastewater operation. I would anticipate that if, if one or two of the positions fell ill for any reason, not just the, the current pandemic virus, that that would change things and people would switch to full-time, you know, every day, five days a week instead of every other week kind of a thing. But I hope that doesn't happen. But I guess the, the ability for the department head to move people in and out of positions that are either cross-trained or in the same position as their counterpart that is, that is ill, that, that the superintendent would have the ability to man and staff his department as needed. We, we will, you know, we have and we will talk about those people that are maybe retired that we can access to bring in if things really get that bad. I don't anticipate that to occur in the next two weeks, but that's something that's out maybe, you know, maybe out into the month and a half, two month time zone. So I feel comfortable. Sean is here. Sean, do you have any comments you want to make on that?
No, I think that pretty much covers it. We did get that information from Jason or the superintendent earlier today. And outside of the lab, we can probably split crews and cover, cover essential duties.
Yep. So it will be a fluid thing as, if people do get sick, we'll start moving people around to make sure that it's, it's still staffed. Does that, does that answer the wastewater question? Any, any more information you desire? Okay, the finance question? Go ahead.
That answered it. I was just wanting to make sure that if we had thought about a backup plan with retired people, that, that at least was a thought and an option.
We actually started thinking about contacting retired police officers on, at the police department also. So I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there.
I don't think the uniform would fit.
Okay, yeah. So that is something we have talked about and we will pursue, continue to pursue because we don't have everything tied down. Finance, I do have Steve here and he can speak more directly to the ability of finance department to carry on remote working. But I will just, you know, state that when, when we talk about remote working or offsite working, and it does not mean that we never ever come in, it just means that we may come in every third day or something. Or when like payroll happens, which just happened today, the payroll clerk was working remotely, came in just for this and then left again. So it is a come in and go kind of activity, but Steve can speak more directly to his department.
Yes, we've got one employee presently that we have been working remotely. We have met as a department several times to talk about workflows. The one item that we're working with IT yet is the VPN connection, which would allow us direct access to our mainframe computer. And we haven't got an answer if that's connected yet, but we are working with IT, which would enable the whole department to work remotely. We have talked about work processes and how the workflows would go. And anywhere where we put out paper, we are transferring to electronic format. And any, any paper that we receive from other departments, we're communicating with them to switch that over to tape our electronic format as well by them scanning them in and sending them to us. So we are working through the processes and if we get the VPN connection, should be able to work remotely.
Any other questions? With that, I'll, I'll just move on to, there was a question about contacting. If City Hall gets shut down, how are people going to contact? We will continue to, I think, advertise, you know, and on the medias that we have, newspaper, radio and, you know, website and Facebook, that, that if you call the department numbers, in most cases, that number, if, if we have the ability, will transfer to the person that you want to get ahold of their smartphone. I've done it to mine. I just, if a phone call comes in, it rings twice, it goes right to my phone. And I can talk to anybody that calls into City Hall, you know, and I, I don't have to be here at City Hall to do that. And the same thing applies for all the numbers that we have that, that have the ability, if they have a smartphone, which, you know, most, at this point, most people do, so I don't see that as a problem. So getting ahold of people is not the problem. And if they're working remotely, then they have email and the other methods to get ahold of their employees to see and handle any issues that come up as best we can. Okay? So that, that should take care of the connectivity question. And of course, anybody emailing the city, we still have, you know, even remotely, we got our tablets or laptops or whatever that we, and if you have a personal laptop, you can, you can get into your email from, from anywhere by, by just logging in. All right, I think the, the next item that I was asked to speak to would be like public works. That seems to be one of those departments that is. That seems to be one of those departments that is, is, uh, maybe half, half, uh, probably really essential and, and, and half you say, well, do we, do we need to do it or can we hold off for two weeks on that particular item? Uh, I did have, uh, through, through Sean put together, uh, a Public Works schedule that, you know, listed essential functions. And, and I can leave Sean, uh, you know, make his own, uh, comments on that. Uh, but, you know, some of the things that, you know, they're talking about, uh, is like street sweeping, uh, sanitary sewer maintenance, uh, park maintenance, uh, ball fields, stump grinding, tree planting, painting, traffic markings. Now, I personally may have an opinion that some of these are, you know, more essential than others. Uh, and you can get down to the, uh, uh, you know, projects that are going on, hydrants, signage work, that actually was listed in the governor's, uh, ma- material that, you know, putting a backup stop signs are important. Uh, mosquito control, you know, now's the time of the year that you do that, you know? Can you wait two weeks? I don't know, you know? Uh, so some of these things are, are in the gray area, but they're on the list that, that Sean has. And, uh, and does that, does that take all the department to do all these things? That's a question that, that probably Sean can answer, you know? Uh, so, uh, again, uh, what I heard was, uh, can we honor the intent of the governors? Uh, and I think we can. It's just at what level of service do we want to draw that line? Sean, did you have anything?
No, you know, if you take any of these individual items, no, it does not take the entire department. But to do all of them in the timeframe that is required to happen, it does require the entire department. And I feel like that the crews themselves, as a department itself, is very, fairly minimalistic based on the amount of items that are accomplished by this department.
So whatever decision gets made, you know, ultimately is, uh, you know, uh, it, it could easily be just simply is, okay, we're going to do the same thing as, uh, as, uh, uh, wastewater, go to a skeleton crew, alternate two weeks to see what happens. Cause any decision we make, I think that was something that, uh, I think Sean, uh, pointed out was that any decision we make, two days from now might be wrong. And we need to be fluid and we need to be able to shift gears and either ramp up or slow down, uh, what we're doing. But the decision today, I guess, is what matters. So with that, uh, I think, you know, when we talk about, uh, park and rec, you know, I, I do think somebody picking up the garbage out in the parks is important enough. Uh, maybe the safety of the swings and the playground is, is, is maybe important enough because we have the governor saying, go out and play. Go out and, and, and recreate, just don't do it in large groups. And so it, it does no good, I think, for us to kind of say, go out and play in the playground, don't be in a large group, but the swing is broke. You know, it, so I think there needs to be some level of service in Public Works. If nothing else, just to be able to, as stated earlier, respond in a reasonable amount of time to pick up that branch that's blocking a road. Okay?
Can I?
Any other?
Audrey Nelson?
Any other question?
Clarification?
Yes.
Um, so if I'm hearing, um, Sean speak, is his recommendation to leave staffing as is? So that they can continue to do that, or what is the department director's recommendation as it comes for Public Works?
John's here, he can answer that.
Uh, I'm sorry, Audrey, can you repeat the question?
What is your recommendation? Full staff?
Yeah, my recommendation is the, since the governor listed Public Works as essentials, to leave all of Public Works as is.
Okay, thank you.
There, there may be other people that would say many of the things they're doing are not essential, so I want to play the other side of the coin. And that just simply is, is there are probably some things that may not be essential. I think in my conversation with Sean, it's, it, it goes something like this. If we delay tree planting for two weeks, that means what we were going to do two weeks from now is delayed two weeks or three weeks. And this thing dominoes, and pretty soon the things that we wanted to get done because of timing of the year now can't be done. And I, I believe there are some things that are essential, and there are probably some things that are not essential. And so to that extent, I would hold up that, that authority to the department head to say, on a day-to-day basis, here are the things we're going to do, here are the things we're not going to do because they're not essential. But I don't think you can just put a blanket over the whole thing and just say, everything we do is essential. It, it, it just, it doesn't, uh, logic just doesn't play out that. So I'm okay with, with leaving all the, all the, uh, Public Works people work, but, but I believe some things have to not be done, yes.
Councilmember Schontis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your last comments, Administrator Grammets, that we can't place a blanket across it and say all public works. Uh, I think we all know the reason why this two weeks is in place. We need to buy our hospitals time to be able to get the equipment and the protective gear that is needed to be able to meet the needs that we are looking at. This is a matter of lives. Are we really saying that we need to plant trees and that is more important than saving potential lives? Because for every person who is out there and touching things, yes, you're not the only person that's going to go into the shop, pick up some keys, get into that truck and move around and about in the shop and, and be on your way to other things. So the question you really have to ask yourself, if you're trying to decide what is essential and what isn't, is what you're doing worth the life of another person? Because we have community members that we will be losing. We have our hospital staff that are going to be tasked beyond what we can imagine, and we are asking for two simple weeks. And I would, I really, uh, my original intent was to make a motion that we authorize the, um, the directors to be able to identify who the essential employees are, but given that blanket, I am really concerned about that. And, and, uh, uh, I think you need to think really seriously about this. Um, is it really worth the life of another person? You touch a surface there for three days. You are responsible for everyone who comes after you for three days, unless you've cleaned it properly. And that's door handles, that's the keys you hang up, that's everything.
Mr. Grammets, continue with, with your comments, um, and then I'm going to Councilmember Plowman. If you wish to speak, raise your hand and I'll call on you.
I don't.
Looking for information on the H R A and the Rec Department, please.
Okay, the, the H R A, I've, I've talked to, uh, Public Works and, and they didn't have a lot of connection with the H R A doing any activities. But I think the, the Community Development, uh, Department may do some things, but I, Dave's not here, but I don't think they have a lot to do with it, so. Is Dave on here?
He's on, Dave's on the call.
Okay. So Dave, can you speak to?
Would you like to make a comment?
David, are you on?
Yes, I am. Sorry, I got disconnected.
Okay, the, the question simply was, as far as the H R A, uh, yeah, your interface, uh, with them in a, in a, yeah, other than a, a telephone or paperwork, uh, process, what interface do you have with the H R A?
Uh, not very much. Uh, we have initiated some initial proposals on how we might give them access to our council, uh, uh, reports and access to our committee, um, getting them involved with, uh, maybe getting some of their incentives, um, integrated into the Renaissance Zone package. Um, we had a brief conversation about maybe doing some contracting with them to do some inspections of rental units, but literally it was just, it was just mentioned, uh, at a brief meeting we had a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we haven't really, you know, vetted it out or really thought about how that might, that might work.
Thank you, uh, Administrator Grammets.
Okay, the next item was, uh, I think the, uh, Recreation Department, Park and Rec. And I see Rob is on. Are you able to speak to how you plan to operate your department during this time?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, yeah. What we talked about at, at, at staff level, because we looked at some of the programs that we've had that would have been started this April, you know, we, of course, we can't be doing those. We just had to plan for the future about what some of our programs will look like, especially because we can't get into the facilities, um, until after May. So we looked at where our programs will start, and we just got to start backtracking about when we can actually start those programs once we get the green light to go. Um, so staff is working on that as far as with all of our big programs. We really get going more, um, towards the end of May and to June with a lot of our programming. So we do have a little bit of time now, um, in our programs to start planning, um, for the future of it. Um, with the, with the Civic Center, a lot of our drive-through events got canceled or postponed. And so at the Civic Center, we're pretty quiet right now just because of, we don't have anything going on. So our maintenance guys have, uh, made a laundry list of, um, maintenance ideas that they have to get done prior to those events coming on. So that's, that's our game plan right now.
Okay, thank you for those comments. And then I'll go to Councilmember Plowman.
Okay, go ahead.
Councilmember Plowman, did you have additional comments you wish to make?
Yeah, thank you. Um, well, I, I think we're trying to thread a needle here because, um, on one hand, there's the argument, and I underst- I fully understand and respect the idea of the domino effect. And that is what, what we hold off on today could potentially domino and, uh, or sand or snowball, um, in the future. And I understand the hardships that that can create. However, at the same time, there is a human and a health element. And that's exactly what the entire country is currently dealing with, um, threading that needle, uh, and where to find the balance. I tend to fall in this category on, uh, plan for the worst, hope for the best. I like the system of redundancies that has been built into, uh, discussed and built into the wastewater treatment plant. And I think it would be wise of us to do that in our other departments because, like I said, I hope it doesn't get as bad as what has been predicted or what has been forecasted. But we would be foolish to not plan and prepare ourselves for that with multiple redundancies in place. So although I, I, my, my gut feel is that, you know what, we are going to get through this and it, you know, we're going to come out the other side. And we got to be, um, mindful of the fact that there can be a domino effect and, and coming out the other side will, will present its own challenges. Um, but aside from that, we got to remember that the human health element is ultimately most important. And those have been the directives that have been given to us all the way up through top administration in this country. And until that changes, um, I think we'd best be wise to follow that because if we end up being wrong, the price to pay is simply too high. And that would be the extent of my comment.
Okay, I'll go back to, thank, thank you, Councilmember Plowman. Next, I'll go back to, uh, Mr. Grammets and make sure that, uh, you didn't have any follow-up. I think I might have cut you off there, so I apologize for that. Then I'm going to Councilmember Nelson.
Yep, not, not a problem there. All I was basically going to, uh, uh, point out was that, uh, even, even those projects, uh, that, that Rob's maintenance guys have, uh, may seem like they're really important. And, and as, as Councilwoman Plowman pointed out, that doesn't mean, you know, we can still just keep going to work because that's not the intent of the governor's, uh, uh, proclamation basically, or order. You know, uh, I don't, I don't see most, all of Park and Rec being, uh, uh, because it's programming, being, uh, stopped because this can be done at a remote site. This can be done at their home, this can be done on a laptop. Uh, pre- preparing for May and June is not something that you have to be on site. So the only question they have is, is the maintenance side? And, uh, again, as, as said earlier, uh, some things probably can get delayed and others may not be necessary, but that's, that should be, I think, a, a determina- determination made by the department head to actually look at every one of these things and say, okay, we can't do that. It's just not necessary, we'll have to delay it. And that's all I was going to say at the end of Park and Rec. So that's all I had. So next.
Okay, I'll go back to Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Nelson, I'd written out that you had three questions. And, um, I just want to make sure that the questions that you had were answered. And that was the one on finance, which was answered by our, uh, Finance Director. The H R A, which was answered by, uh, Dr. Ramstead. And our Recreation Department, that was answered by, uh, our Director, Baumgart. Uh, do you have any follow-up questions to that, Councilmember Nelson? And again, you have to unmute your mic.
All right. I had two other questions too, and that was about Public Works. And I, while I hear what Councilmember Schontis is saying, I do think we have a responsibility to find a balance between protecting our community and protecting our staff with that. And so my concern is that the more people we have at home, the more things that we are going to experience. And I can tell you the work that the H R A is doing with the, I mean, we're worried about putting food in front of people, but there are real issues in our apartment complexes. I don't know how that crosses over into what departments, but just like we talked about with snow removal, what can the police handle, what can the community service handle? I do think that Public Works can be our eyes and ears to the community. And so while we're working to protect our staff, I think we also have a responsibility to protect the people who are at home. And so I hope that we will consider that, um, with that. The other question, just from a technology standpoint, I had a good conversation with Ross today. And I guess my concern is I think we have some limitations with what we're even using today. And I asked him what he needed so that we don't have technology issues. And so I would hope that the council would empower, um, our administrator and our I T person to deal with the technology so that our staff have better options to work at home. And I think we have a responsibility to the community to make sure that our staff are, that are being paid, are doing productive work, or that we're working in within the, within the, um, respects of the contracts, et cetera. So I'll quit with that.
Member Elvron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I agree with, um, what, what, uh, Councilmember Nelson is saying. We have a responsibility for both our, our workers and our community. It's a, it's a balance, and that's why we're meeting tonight. It's very difficult. Um, I want to plant the seed with our department head that if they have to come in, if employees have to come in, stagger them. We need to maintain the six-foot circle. We need to maintain high levels of, uh, hand care. If you're sick, stay home. Those are the things that we have to practice and, and, um, and, and, you know, keep on doing. But we have to come up with creative ways to keep our people coming in and going out, and they're not, not interacting with each other. I know it's tricky. Um, but we got to remember the basics, but I, I also agree with that. We, we've got a, we've got a multimillion-dollar, uh, city, and we've got to keep that going. And it's, it's, um, it's a tricky balance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we've heard a number of different conversations revolving around staffing and around the people. Um, I want to go back and remind people, um, I have listened to every one of the governor's press releases that he has done, and I've tried to listen to the majority of the ones by President Trump as well. The one thing that we can't forget is math doesn't look at what's essential or what's unessential. And we need to be looking at the math, and the math tells us that if you do the math for Candyway County, we will overwhelm our healthcare system probably in that, uh, week eleven. probably in that week 11 to week 14. And if the math is wrong, good, as Councilmember Plowman said. But the math has been proven to be working. And so the problem I have in the conversations that I've been in with emergency management, with Caris Health, is that we only have so many respirators, I'm sorry, so many ventilators. And once we overwhelm those ventilators, if you're planting a tree or if you're doing something similar to that, then that potentially could be taking that life. And so I know that sounds very dramatic. And I hope I'm not right, similar to what a lot of you have said tonight, that we hope we're not right. But emergency planning calls for us to plan for the worst and expect the best. So as you've, and as someone prepares a proposed, as someone proposes a proposed motion, unless the administrator has one that he wants us to consider or the HR Director. Keep that in mind of that, you know, the math shows us that we're on a curve that, that our local resource cannot support.
I'll make a motion to authorize the administrator, along with the department directors, to identify the essential employees needed to meet the basic government operations for our city based on the stay home directives. And that the directors also then identify those employees that can work from home and those employees that are not able to work from home.
Second.
There's been a motion that has been made and seconded for, to follow the director, directive of the governor discussion on the motion as presented. Councilmember Mesky.
Uh, curious, where's the final authority in that motion?
The way I heard the motion, the, the final authority was in the hands of the administrators. The way I heard it, I don't know if that was the intent of the motioner or not.
But with the understanding that obviously they are working with the directors to make those decisions.
Councilmember Nelson, I see you turned your mic on. You wish to make a comment?
Yes, um, I, I can respect that, that motion. I think when you read through the fine print in the governor's thing there, it does give some latitude to what essential services are. And I think we've talked about some of those tonight when it relates to finance and some of those. So if that's the intent of the motion with that to be reviewed, because the one paragraph we got about the governor's information, if you went into some other things, there were other areas that, that went to different places. And so I, I guess I ask for further clarification, just as Councilmember Mesky did, with the intent that we are allowing the department heads and the administrator to come up with what's deemed essential services.
Additional, additional questions to the motion? Additional questions to the motion?
Can we read the motion back, please?
Please read the motion back.
Again, I actually wrote it down before I said it. So if you'd like, I can read that. The motion is to authorize the administrator and department directors to identify essential employees needed to meet, to meet basic government operations per the stay home directive. And that they also determine employees that will be working at home and those who will not be working at home.
Councilmember Nelson.
So the motion as it reads is talking about essential employees, not essential services. And so that's the question I think that I have, is that I think there are some things we've talked about that are essential services. And so is that, is that going to be clarified with the administrator when he talks about essential employees? Being determined as essential services or is that a different motion?
I believe if you write it as an additional motion, you can make that as additional motion. Uh, but we need to handle the one that we're on now. Councilmember Mesky. Councilmember Mesky waved off. Councilmember Osmus.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the essential job be the, and the person who does it, then that becomes the essential employee? If this, if, if they're doing the service, they're the essential employee. I, I guess I don't understand a difference there that needs to be changed or clarified.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Schwantus followed by the city administrator.
I, I would defer to the administrator first. Thank you.
Administrator Grammets.
Mayor and city councilors, I would look at determining the essential services that are to be required and then staffing that service to the level necessary to accomplish that service. So I won't be looking at the, the people nor the position. If we, what do we want to accomplish? What's the hierarchy of what has to be done? What can be put off? And then applying the manpower to make it happen. And so the, the differentiation between service or employee, service comes first. We want to identify the service. It's kind of like identifying the, the, the call at the fire and then putting as many man, uh, firemen towards that fire as necessary to accomplish the task. Same thing is going to apply with whatever jobs that we have in each department. We'll identify whether or not they're important. Do they need to be done or can they be delayed? And then we will look at staffing that particular, you know, activity or work day. Does that make sense?
Councilmember Mesky.
Makes total sense. Um, again, my concern is it sounds as if department heads and city administrators, I know they're both involved in it. But as we move forward, it has to be a very fluid process and we got to make decisions very quickly on the fly. So the, the city administrator has to be delineated as the decision maker for that after considering all the input from the department heads. Because there may need to be changes that are going to have to happen. And we don't have time, we won't have time to get involved in a whole political process when that happens. They have to have the authority to actually function. So the, the motion feels like it was like a, it's going to be a team effort all the time. Um, but I do believe really it needs to ultimately go through the city administrator. And so I don't know how, if it needs to be reworded or not, but I really think that authority must be clearly delineated.
Councilmember Nelson, I see your mic is on again.
Um, yes, I'd offer an amendment to the motion unless the author is willing to amend it to what the administrator was carrying forward as the message that the services and then the, the serve, and then the employees.
Councilmember Schwantus, are you willing to amend, amend your motion?
I would note that the motion really addressed two things. One was identifying the essential employees. And I believe the first time I said it was with the input of the department heads. And the second time I perhaps didn't include the input from department heads. But the second part of that was using the language that we find on the agenda. And I use the terms government, government operations because that's, that is what is presented before us. If you want to fill that word in with services, it really doesn't matter to me. We're splitting hairs. It really is the same thing. What are the basic operations that we need to have and to have, to be able to run this city, still protect our resources, but protect the people as well. So, uh, but again, coming back to being faithful to the stay home directive that was put in place by our governor.
Go back to Councilmember Nelson. Are you wishing to make that as an amendment to the motion?
I would make an amendment that, because I didn't hear clearly that, that the city administrator will determine the essential services and then the essential staff in a manner that best honors the, the wishes of the stay at home.
Okay, so I need a second to that motion for discussion. Councilmember Mesky.
Second.
What's been made and seconded. Discussion to the amendment. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantus.
No.
Bess.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Now.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
That motion carries. Councilmember Nelson, we're getting a lot of background noise off of your mic. So I'm not sure where that's coming from. We're getting a lot of background noise. Okay, so we have an amendment to the motion, the original motion. Now we'll go to resuming discussion on the original motion. Discussion to the original motion. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
I'm sorry, just seeking clarification. We are voting on the motion as amended.
No, we're voting on the motion, the original motion. We already voted on the amendment.
So it includes the amendment.
And it would include the amendment.
Thank you. Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
City Administrator Grammets, the next item on the agenda, please.
All right, mayor and city councilors, the item is motion to set compensation for employees. What we had basically identified was that there will be employees at work. There will be employees at home working remotely. And there will be employees who are not able to remote work at home. And so they will not be working at all. The, uh, uh, human resource, Ms. Beckman had prepared an item for the city council, or actually for the, for the employees, uh, last week to deal with how do we, how do we pay our employees if in fact they have to go home? And, uh, and not be able to work. And so our options are, as, as we go through this process.
Councilmember Nelson, could you, could you mute your mic, please? Thank you.
The options that we have are, uh, is to pay the employees, uh, whether they're working or not working 100%, so 80 hours for the next two weeks. There are communities that are just saying, we're sending you home, you can work at home or you're going to be working on site. But we're going to pick up 100% of your wages. The, the next step down from that is actually something that, that I think Candyway County is going on record is doing, is that they're going to pay for the first week and that, that the employee then has to use personal paid time, which would be your sick leave, vacation, comp time to make up the difference for the second week. So they're like, they, they split the baby. They went half and half, as I understand it. The next option down is to just basically tell everybody, if you're working, you get paid. If you're, uh, working at home, uh, uh, you know, you get paid, uh, by the hours that you work at home. And if you need to make up the difference, you utilize sick leave, vacation or comp time. And that's the, the process that we had put in place as our employee notice to the City of Wilmer employees. That was dated 3/18/2020. What we also added to that was if you did not have enough personal paid time to make it the full 80 hours, that you could go into the negative before the end of the, uh, two weeks. So, you know, let's say you had 60 hours of, uh, paid leave that you could take, sick leave, vacation, whatever, that you would go into hold 20 hours. We would still maintain your 80 hour pay. But then when you came back to work, you would, uh, have to go for a period of time and build your, your leave back up to repay that advance, if you want to call it. So that's what we've basically, uh, put forth on the March 18th document. But I wanted to make sure that the city council was aware that, you know, there are other options than, than what we had. Uh, and again, that's up to the city council to make that determination of how they want to move forward on that. So with that, I would, uh, return it back to the mayor for discussion.
Okay, so we're looking for a, a motion, uh, in a second to forward with the plan that you, uh, feel best with doing. Um, I guess there were three things presented to us. So we maybe need some discussion before we have a motion. Councilmember Plowman, followed by Osmus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would just like to inquire of our city attorney, uh, Mr. Scott. Uh, is there anything that you've heard that would be in conflict with either federal executive order or state executive order?
Mayor, Councilmember Plowman, no. Each of the three options identified by Administrator Grammets just now can be legally implemented. And we've provided guidance on how to implement it. I think the policy choice has been presented clearly and there are no issues with those choices.
Councilmember Osmus.
Okay, um, I like the information that was in the March 18th memo that went out that basically says, if I heard this correctly, then that an employee that cannot physically do their job while the city is shut down or they do not have the capability to do it, to work from home, that they use their vacation, comp or sick leave. And if they don't have enough, um, then they get an advance. I, I thought everything that was spelled out in the March 18th memo is how I was thinking things should go. So that was a motion and a little, a little extra.
Second.
Okay, got the motion. I did not get the second. Raise your hand. Schwantus made the second. Additional discussion to the motion. So the motion is basically to follow the memo that was sent out on, I believe you said the date was the 18th. Correct?
Yes. Yes.
Administrator Grammets and Ms. Beckman, you're clear in what the motion is and, and you don't need any clarification on that, is that correct?
Ms. Beckman, do you have any comment? I feel, I feel clear, uh, as to what the intent is, yes.
Councilmember Mesky.
If we move in this direction, nobody has to be put in this situation. I'm hoping that we would have a very liberal interpretation of vacation comp or sick leave that the employee wishes to utilize in this case. Because obviously we have very dedicated employees that didn't ask for a viral pandemic. So I would hope that we'd be very liberal in the interpretation of what leave they choose to use.
Mr. Grammets, um, on that memo also, on the bottom of that memo, isn't that the one that stated that at the discretion of the administrator, an additional, up to an additional 80 hours could be granted? Is that correct?
I believe, I remember reading that language and I can't see it right this second. But I believe that's correct.
Ms. Beckman, can you help us out here, please?
She's on.
I have her on my screen, but I'm not seeing her. So, okay. Um, any, I don't see, uh, we have an ability to get clarification. Um, would the maker of the motion be willing to make sure that that, talk, to talk, talking to Councilmember Mesky's concern to make sure that additional 80 hours is in the, is in there? Are you okay with that?
I am, I am good with that.
Okay, Ms. Beckman is on.
Okay, Ms. Beckman. Okay, Ms. Beckman? You have to unmute.
I wish I could wave.
Go ahead on your phone if you want to unmute your phone, you can up on that way. Well, just shake your head if you're in agreement. On the memo dated on the 18th, is there a provision on the bottom of that that allows for the administrator to grant an additional 80 hours? Shake your head, yes or no? We got you now, you're live. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Sorry, I called in on the phone, but apparently you can't hear me on the phone. Yes, it's approved to go negative 80 hours, or have 80 hours advanced to them. And it does have the provision that the city administrator can allow them to go farther than that, but it would have to be with his approval.
If you find it, right at the last.
I guess if I unmute, I'm here now. Councilmember Maskey, is that, is that your concern? Thank you. Okay, I believe we have the interpretation, and I think we have a clear direction. Additional discussion, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I just would seek clarification. I know we asked Robert Scott regarding it, but does this meet the requirements of the unions? I mean, are we okay with it as it relates to union employees?
Mayor, members of the council, I have not had the opportunity to review, and I don't know that Brandon Simmons in our office has either, the labor contract to know exactly if this meets the requirements of the contract. There may be a requirement to at least meet and talk to the union about the decision, although certainly determining work schedules is a management right. That doesn't necessarily mean you get to do it without talking to them, though. So I think there will be a little bit of follow-up that will need to happen. But I think that the council can certainly make this policy choice, and then it's up to staff in our office to implement it correctly.
Also, City Attorney Scott, under emergency declaration, I think we have additional leeway as well, although I'm sure that we're going to adhere to the union contracts as closely as we can.
Mayor, members of the council, I agree, the emergency declaration is helpful for situations like this. It does not give you, you know, carte blanche to just ignore its provisions, but in implementing a management decision like this, that certainly will be helpful.
Okay, additional comments to the question. I don't see Councilmember Fagerly, so Mr. Grammets, Councilmember Fagerly, have any comments?
I will ask him. Mr. Fagerly?
Thank you. So my concern is, people that are working at home, how do you track that they're actually doing something? Do you give them a job to bring home, and the report is written, or how does that work? Some places you log into the computer, and they see when you log in, so I don't see that here.
Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, I would anticipate the answer to that question would be that in a situation like this, we would have to trust our employees to be honest and forthright in jotting down the hours that they have worked.
I believe that, and I'm not a labor attorney, but I have read some stuff around this, and there are certain things we can ask and certain things we cannot ask. So I know that our HR director will make sure that we follow those policies. Additional questions or additional comments to the question? Councilmember Alvarado, did I see your hand up?
No, sir. No, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Osmus.
Okay, I don't know how other departments do their time sheets, or how they do their activity logs, but I just, from my background with law enforcement, we would have every minute, I mean, every hour, where you put down what you worked on, what you did, who you interviewed, what reports you did. So I don't, I don't, if that follows in with the labor standards, or whatever the union contract issues are, but I don't think that would be that difficult to have to document your timeframe, and just like an attorney, of what case you're working on, and where do you bill those hours to.
Additional questions to the motion? Roll call.
Councilmember Chantis?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Maskey?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. City Administrator Grammets, I think we have one more thing, correct?
That is correct. The last item on the agenda that I have is the two-week timeframe that the governor spelled out from March 27 through April 10. We have a city council meeting scheduled for April 6. We have some committee meetings that would proceed and follow in that week. And my question quite simply is, is, does the city council wish to delay meetings like we have for the last two weeks to result in coming back on the 13th as planned at this point in time? Initiate normal operations, you know, at City Hall, and start putting together agendas for the for the April 20th city council meeting? Or do we wish to have committee meetings and the April 6 city council meeting, which ultimately results in having, you know, staff come in and prepare agendas and get documentation and put it all together, you know, which can be done? So if we're going to send, you know, like, people home for two weeks, they won't be able, you know, some people would not be able to stay home. They will have to come back in, because we'll have to prepare agendas and send them out, and get ready for digital city council meetings on April 6. So what I'm looking for is direction as to what I can tell the staff that, yes, we're having a meeting on the 6th, and yes, we will have committee meetings in that week. So be prepared to come in and do what you need to do, you know, maybe you come in for three or four hours, and then put it all together and send your agenda out. Or are we going to delay everything in this two-week period as we did in the prior two weeks?
So I'll speak to this to start with. You know, the governor has been very clear in essential business. The administrator and staff have the ability, by the motions we've made tonight, to do the business that needs to be done of the city. And I would speak in favor of delaying our next council meeting until the 20th, that we give staff the opportunity during the week of the 13th to prepare agendas to bring in front of you. Again, this is a council decision, but I would recommend that we not pull staff back just to pull an agenda together. Our staff is going to be taking care of the work that needs to be done, and that would, in my opinion, put them in harm's way that is not necessary. I will stand for the council. Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can support that move or that type of action, because it kind of concurs with what we've discussed tonight already. But just with the understanding, and this is just going to be a general understanding guideline, that because there are things of the city that are going on and will be going on, and that business to some extent needs to continue and it doesn't stop, and council does need to be aware of some of these items, that individual council members and especially committee chairs stay in communication, and we can do that without, you know, we can do that while adhering to all the safety guidelines and whatnot, but those lines and channels of communication should stay open between committee members, committee chairs, department heads, directors, and our city administrator regarding specific issues. And just for an example, our local option sales tax projects, other finance issues, the streets programs, those things are very time-sensitive, and they can't, they're not just going to go away. So I believe that discussions still need to be had, but we can get by doing that without formally meeting. So as long as we're able to do that, I'm okay with the action that you speak of, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Plowman, that's a good point, yeah. I should have prefaced it by saying that it would be assumed, I guess I should never assume anything, that the department directors and the committee chairs would be speaking on a frequent basis so that they were briefed. And then if those individual committees needed to be briefed, that that be done. I know that the administrator is planning on increasing communication, either electronically or other ways, as well to keep people informed, and I think he's done a very good job of communicating, and we're going to ramp it up just a little bit. So, Councilmember Osmus.
Okay, bouncing off what Councilmember Plowman said, I would feel more comfortable if we had the feedback from the department heads, if there was anything that was time-sensitive. So if we did delay the April 6 meeting, if there was anything that needed to get voted on to move some kind of a project forward, and I guess I'm probably thinking most specifically about streets, but that we don't delay those until April 20th, if that's going to be a major problem. So I want feedback from the department heads to make sure that we're not going to miss anything, that we couldn't just have a quick meeting like this to be able to vote to move some projects forward.
Well, I will just remind us that we've been in meetings for three hours today. Councilmember Maskey.
Well, actually, I was going to ask two questions, and the first one is the one that Councilmember Osmus just asked. But I would say, I'm okay with moving the council meeting if there is not anything that's pressing. But I think it would be really important, and we're starting to allude to it, that maybe we have our meetings of our committees, if that is necessary, utilizing this kind of a format, because I believe this might be the type of format we're going to use. I know we're all talking two weeks, but news flash, if logarithmic growth happens the way that they predicted, this might be longer than that. I just throw that out there. So it might be a good practice to have a week where we do some of the committee meetings this way to prepare for a council meeting later on. But if there is something that's pressing, I think we need to maybe do something like this quick. But I would, again, we need to hear from the department heads.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would appreciate what you said about City Administrator Grammets keeping us in the loop a little bit more, especially under these circumstances. I know things are very fluid, changing very often. We don't know what's coming down from the governor nationally, or anything like that. I agree with Councilmember Maskey. You know, two weeks, things just don't stop in two weeks. I'm afraid this is going to be bigger than two weeks. So we're going to have to be in communication, we're going to have to cooperate and get through this together. So I like the idea of, the bottom line is, I like the idea of being, giving it more information so we are aware of what's going on locally. Thank you.
I would encourage, if councilmembers have not watched the governor's news conference from yesterday, it is really worth your time to watch about the first 25 minutes of that, when all the graphs were there and stuff. I'm assuming most of you have probably watched that, but if you haven't, that's well worth your time. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. Just seeking clarification, were we talking about committee meetings? Are we talking about not having a council meeting on the first week in April? And then a question, I think there's some deadlines coming up as it relates to finance. I think there's questions about bonding, but in particular streets, I think it would be helpful for us to know what those deadlines are, and if there are things that need to be done, if there's a format that works for us to do this. But I'm just looking for clarification on the next council meeting. In talking with finance, there is not a need for any action items for the first council meeting in April, but there probably is for the second council meeting in April. And so we had tentatively said that we would meet with that, and, but I'm, so I'm seeking clarification with the first council meeting, and then kind of what deadlines we're going to be facing.
Yeah, what I was suggesting, and there is not a motion on the table at this point, what I was suggesting is that we would cancel the meeting on April 6. The next council meeting would be April 20th, and committees would work at the direction of the department director and meet during the week of the 13th to have an agenda prepared for the meeting on the 20th. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. If that's the case, I think our community is looking for correspondence and for information. I also had a request, kind of for our new administrator, to kind of be out there, that people don't know him. And so maybe there's an opportunity for Brian to convey to the community what we've done, what we're doing, if we're not going to have a meeting, so that some of this information gets out there, and kind of what the next steps are for the council. Because I've also taken criticisms about what is the council doing right now. And so I think we need to clarify some of those things for our leaders in our community, and to help get that communication out with where the city's at and with our leadership.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Grammets.
The Public Works Director had made comments to me earlier today on the schedule as far as the street projects were concerned, and that might be of value, and then maybe the Finance Director can follow up and just kind of, those, at the present time, are the two things that are probably the most, I won't say, well, they're pressing, but they're the ones that I think that are the most pressing. So Sean, would you like to just give a description of what your concerns are, and so that they understand what your thoughts are?
Yeah, thanks, Brian. So we currently, we're currently sitting on crack seal bids that have been requested and received that need council approval, so that we can go forward with our crack seal project. We've got bids currently being advertised for four of our improvement projects. They started being, they started advertising this week, and that's the one that will be requiring bonding, so we do need some answers for that. Of course, the original schedule was to call for the assessment hearing on the 20th, and then the May 18th was going to be the hearing, so we've got some time for that one. But if we can't do projects because we can't do bonding, I'd rather know sooner rather than later so that I can pull those bids off of the market. But the crack seal numbers are in now and ready to be approved.
Okay, Steve, did you want to touch base on the financial side?
Yeah, we've been in constant contact with our bond consultants and the local lending institutions. And so there was a point about a week ago where the ability to have somebody buy bonds was not there, but that has improved a little bit after conversations today. We planned and have had conversations with Administrator Grammets, and with the Monday memo expanding on where all that is at. And so at this point, the schedule is going to get pushed back two weeks. And so the April 20th meeting would be an appropriate time to take any action and further discussion on the bonding.
Councilmember Plowman, I'm going to kind of put you on the spot here a little bit. Would you be in a position to where, I'm not sure if you're aware of where those bonding or crack ceiling is, but I mean, would you be willing or amicable to, after we get this issue resolved, to make a motion just to allow staff to get that done? Give you a little time to noodle on it if you want, but whatever you think. You want to talk, now go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that's a good one to bring up, and I think it's a good example, as are a couple of the other items that have been mentioned. Some of this stuff needs to be addressed. Some of this stuff needs to be addressed, uh, sooner rather than later. Um, and we do have the ability to, to talk about it and as I think we're experiencing right now, when we have the technology available and it works correctly, um, it can work somewhat smoothly. And, uh, I, I think now that we have some experience venturing into these waters, um, I think we can certainly handle that, um, with that first item, the crack seal specifically. Um, I think, you know, uh, we knew what, what, kind of what to expect and I know that staff is well aware of, of what our expectations are, um, especially our administrator and our Public Works Director. Fully entrust them, uh, with the ability to, to take that particular project and, and move forward wisely. Um, but with that said, there are larger projects, uh, the street projects as a whole amongst others that are going to need to be discussed probably before we have the ability to meet again, um, in person. So I, I think it's probably a foregone conclusion at this point that we're going to have to utilize technology to the best of our abilities and keep things moving along as best as we are able.
Okay, the first question on the table, is anybody willing to make the motion? Brian, can you?
I would go ahead and move that forward.
I'm sorry, I missed who said that. Was it Plowman?
I will move that forward, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Can you get a second? Councilmember Nelson.
Just a question, um, do we have the information on the bids or what we're, what we are wanting to award?
Councilmember Nelson, yes, we do. We've got those in hand, uh, car forms ready and would have been ready what, last week for the council meet, after, for the last public works meeting. So it's ready to go at a moment's notice.
But we're being asked to vote on it right now. So do we have that information so that we can, that can be part of the motion?
No. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think with, with this one, I mean, it, I, I don't, I haven't been a part of a process where staff's recommendation on, uh, this particular item or an item of this nature would be anything that we would deviate from. Um, so I'm comfortable moving forward on it. Like I said, uh, with larger items as, as we move forward on the street projects, because those are very, very large projects. Um, and there's bonding and all those other financial issues, um, that need to be bounced off of the finance department. Um, my feeling is a little bit different in terms of discussing the details, but I, I think, uh, all that I've heard in my entire time on the council, I don't think there's ever been a crack seal, um, bid that came back that we didn't follow the recommendation of staff on. And I imagine the recommendation of staff would be as it would or has been in, in previous years. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmus.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, um, staff, can we make sure and get that sent to council as quickly as we can? I know we probably can't get it done yet today, but as quickly as possible, additional discussion. Okay, so the motion is to go ahead with the, uh, crack seal bid as uh, recommended by Councilmember Plowman, seconded by Councilmember Osmus. Roll call.
Member Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Swantis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Um, Mr. Grammets, can you, uh, can you bring us back to item number three and just give us a very, very, very short? Um, detail on that so we can get that motion, get that move forward?
I'm not sure what you're asking for, Ms. Mayor. Didn't we vote on that?
The, the last thing you wanted done, we hadn't voted on it. Yeah, we had discussion around it, but we didn't vote on it.
Well, that's to cancel the meeting.
Oh.
Sixth meeting.
Can't, the cancel the meeting?
I think it's, I think it's to move the next meeting to the twentieth, I think is what it is.
Right, right, right. Yep. So the, the, the plan was, as, as stated earlier, that, uh, in two weeks, you know, we're supposed to be back on the thirteenth, that we prepare all documents and that uh, the city council meeting on the sixth be, uh, eliminated and that we'll come back on the twentieth. But I think, you know, with the action that we've, uh, you know, had or had discussion on here is that we would have our committee meetings uh, before that so that the committees could make recommendations for the twentieth city council meeting.
So moved. I didn't see that. Councilmember Plowman, I saw your hand up. I didn't see who made the motion. Okay, Councilmember Meskey made the motion. Councilmember Plowman.
Uh, second for discussion.
Motion made in second, Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would ask that the, uh, motion just reflect if it does not, because I'm sorry, it broke up just a little bit, but, um, that committee meetings are to be discussed by committee chairs and department directors and scheduled to be conducted via technological means. Um, if necessary, if the, uh, if it didn't already include that and if the primary motioner is, uh, friendly to that amendment.
Absolutely. Yeah, so my understanding was is that committee chairs would work with the committee, um, liaisons or department directors, uh, to the committee and then share that information. And if they needed a meeting, that meeting would happen. Otherwise they would have the next council, full council meeting would be on the twentieth of April. Additional discussion to the motion. Roll call.
Audrey Nelson.
Councilmember Nelson, I'm sorry, I didn't see your button. Come on, I apologize.
No, that's okay. I just, um, want to make sure that our city administrator will put out a communication plan from him about what we're doing and how the next steps are so that, um, the ci, the citizens know what we are, what we are doing. I'm supportive of the motion.
I will do that, yes.
Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Swantis.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Uh, that motion passes as well. The next, uh, item that has been brought up as a concern is the communication that is happening within the community. Um, and, um, I do know that we have the ability to be on Rack Eight. Um, and so if council members, uh, wish to be on Rack Eight, um, I have done two press, uh, one press conference and one press release, uh, on Rack Eight. Um, and I know that our staff there is very capable and can do a good job of that. If there's council members that wish to get out and do that, um, I would refer you back to the city charter and to the, uh, emergency operations plan, which talks about the communication plan in situations like this, which I'm sure most of you are very familiar with, as I am. And, uh, just so that we make sure we're following those, uh, avenues as well, but the council can get in front of the, uh, press whenever they would like. So, Mr. Scott, were you trying to get my attention? Okay.
No, Mayor.
Okay, any other comments, um, in revolving around that?
Councilmember Nelson.
Councilmember Nelson, go ahead.
No, I appreciate the correspondence. I think it would be helpful though for council members to know that it was going on um, versus finding it out on Facebook. And so I would hope that we would be able to know, um, what the subject manner is and to do that. I also think that it's probably really appropriate for our staff to be communicating. Um, I would be happy with that, along with the mayor continuing the communication, um, with that. I just think it's important for us to make sure that the community has, um, knows what we're doing. So I'll quit with that.
Councilmember Osmus.
I think the, the past talks that you've given on Rack Eight, uh, were very good and I would like to see it continue. Um, I think the public needs to know that the city is addressing things and the more, and if they want to tune in then to find that out, that they have the, the opportunity to do that. Um, I, I just, I am fully in favor of continuing that kind of dissemination of information.
Yeah, it's, um, um, the first, the first press conference was really called at the direction of Dr. Menace in Emergency Management. And so that was out of my control. The second one I was totally in control with. And, uh, I thought that that information had been sent out and if it was, if it was not, that, that's my fault. Uh, the other thing is, is that, um, uh, my phone is always on twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. If anybody wants to call me, I even answer it. Um, and, uh, if you want to send emails, um, I, I respond back to those. Um, and so, uh, I do not believe that we can over communicate. Um, I think that communication is, is a key piece and I think any way we can communicate with the public, I think is, is, uh, very, uh, that, that's our benefit. I agree with that. Additional comments? Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I want to give you some, uh, accolades, kudos, whatever, uh, on your press conferences. Um, when they came across Facebook, I shared them. I got a lot of likes on it. So, um, our community is, um, oh, out there, they're aware of what's going on. They want to know what the city is doing. Um, your leadership is appreciated and I, I appreciate you, um, um, being up, upfront in front of the television, letting them know what's going on. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I also want to, I want to echo that, um, that you have done a great job in communication. I think this is a, a, a good opportunity and I, I say that with a little bit of hesitation because what's going on in current events is, is all but good. Um, but this is a, a good opportunity for us as a council, um, as elected leaders, uh, to be just that, to be leaders. Um, we're elected not only to make the decisions that are, uh, fun and, um, sometimes enjoyable, but also for the decisions that are difficult. And, uh, with that said, I think it's an excellent opportunity for each of us, um, to represent the, the body of us as a unified front. Um, so maybe just up for consideration and I'm not even going to like formalize it or anything, but the idea moving forward, maybe there's some way that we can, um, each individually take part in, um, in maybe conveying, uh, different messages to the community. Um, you know, maybe, uh, once a week or twice a week, uh, potentially switching off, um, messages. And I don't know what, if we want to work with Rack or work with IT or whatnot, but I know that if we could each hit on a different subject, um, and address maybe some concerns and I know things are continuously changing, so that may change, but something that could potentially be considered. I don't know if anybody likes that idea. But again, from my perspective, it would, um, definitely, uh, unify us as a whole and present a unified front to the community and I think that would be good. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the best means of communication is Rack Eight because we can keep our social distancing there. We actually have marks on the floor of where people stand. Um, so you make sure that you're giving that message of social distancing. Um, and I think communication, I think is one thing, uh, because that would be covered under the media and, uh, that it was covered under the governor's press conference of essential people. So you look on that, that is, uh, I think it's the, I'm not going to guess what it was from the top, but it was one of the top issues. So additional comments and, uh, around this issue? Okay, seen and hearing, no hands going up or any buttons being turned on? Is there anything else the council wishes to, uh, relay to each other at this time? I know that there's been a concern that it's been quite some time since we've gotten together. Um, I want to thank each of you for all the work that you do as well. Um, it's not, this isn't the fun stuff. This is what we, what we all signed up for. But as a, has been stated already tonight, um, leadership is stepping up and doing the right thing even when it's not fun. So, um, I want to just, uh, thank all of you for the work that you've done as well. Um, Mr. Grammets, any closing comments?
Yes, I have one more item I just want to bring to your attention that, uh, you may have all received an email, uh, from the city clerk talking about whether or not the city council wanted to conduct the board of adjustment or turn that over to the county this year. And, uh, it's scheduled for the, the twentieth, April twentieth, I believe at, at, at noon. Uh, we heard back from about three of you and so I guess in order to move forward, uh, hearing, hearing nothing from the rest, I anticipate that we will, as a city council, conduct the board of adjustment instead of leaving it back, they're leaving the county take care of that. Is that the, uh, the position of you tonight?
I, uh, I, I did not receive that, um, but I did speak with council member Fagerly about that yesterday. Uh, that has been the position of the council is that they want to do that locally. So, um, if you're opposed to that, let us know now. Otherwise it will stay here. And if someone could include me in that correspondence, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed, but we do need a quorum, a quorum to attend. And since we hadn't heard from everybody, uh, to get a quorum, I felt the need to bring it up tonight.
Okay.
So we have to know by tomorrow by noon who can be there so that.
Who, who is unable to attend? Please raise your hand if you're unable to attend.
Mr. Mayor, I was originally, I was originally unable to attend, but because of the COVID nineteen, I, um, believe my calendar is now available. I won't be out of town for meetings.
And we need one more council member that didn't respond that could now respond. Okay, it looks like everybody's going to be there. I don't, Councilmember Osmus.
I can be there.
Okay, it looks like, it looks like we should have, uh, enough people. Also, uh, if you were watching your emails as, as this, uh, conversation was happening, uh, Kelly did, uh, Kelsey did send us out the bid tabs, so you, you have that in your possession at this time. Additional things that the council wishes to speak about at this time? Seen and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Councilmember Meskey seconded by Osmus. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Remember to, uh, leave the meeting.
Leave the meeting.
So the, the vote was to go forward with project, I mean, you guys approved the project, so we can.